Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to first call your attention to the package that some of you should have received, either when you came in or while you received it. You will pull your packet out. The package contains a cover sheet, major and essential expenses not included in the approved 2019-2020 budget season, a list of recommended items to resolve in the 2019-2020 budget season, and a list of ten recommended options. I would also like to call your attention to a new addition that was added, which is option nine, which was added yesterday and confirmed this morning. This option, $100,000, are included. What's included in option nine, just to bring your attention to it to you so that before we start public hearing, you will have all the information that you need. But in option nine, it includes reducing the recycling center hours to Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays only, to remove all hardware line items, hardware and software line items, and to reduce other budget line items. A FEMA reimbursement will be applied in the auctioning of equipment. This would yield us $988,681.89, which would satisfy our deficit with no impact to our citizens or our employees. Now you have the options before you. We will go ahead and open up the public hearing. Some of the ground rules associated with the public hearing is that each person will have one to three minutes. Please keep the comments specific to the budget and the deficit items. When you get to the podium, please state your name for the record. Let us begin.
Michelle Duke with the news. Can you explain and detail the hardware and software items that could be taken away?
Those are all items that are in the budget line items that are marked specifically hard line and soft line. Each department has hard line and software items. Those are items that are not covered, that are covered in the GOB fund that were already being taken care of.
Hey, John Floyd, um, we pay a solid waste disposal fee that soon covers the cost of recycling centers.
Solid waste, yes.
And this might be a question, can we pay a fee on that? If we reduce that amount, can we legally take that $106,000 out of that fee and move it to a show of thought? And use it for something else?
That's a legal question, but I believe it can be done. And it's a staffing issue that we're reducing, the solid waste fee. I believe that tends to, um, that's also what's for us to haul our trash and things like that are included in that.
I still would like to know. My name's Delores Wilson. I would like to know about this option nine you're talking about, about Tuesdays and Thursdays. Now, as a recycling, um, what is that? We can go Tuesdays, Thursdays, certain days and certain things.
Do you say Thursdays and Saturdays, those recycling centers will be open?
So they're not going to be open every day anymore?
No. That is an option. That is a recommendation largely because anyone that has trash pickup in country, they pay for that service to be done and they get their trash picked up once a day. So we can toggle with which places are open and which days. We can play with that, but the funding from that source with employees is in the amount of, I believe it's a hundred and, um, $106,000, $106,9342 would be the, um, what we would yield as enough as the income or revenue for that.
So Monday through Saturday, I think it was like seven or eight till, um, one, it closed, but then from this point on, you're trying to change that?
Yes, that is a recommendation that we do three days a week instead of six.
Who did the recommendation for it?
I put the recommendations together.
But it hasn't been finalized?
It has not been finalized.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
I'm supervisor. Uh, my name is Joe Ryan. I got a couple of questions. One, um, I don't quite understand how we got to where we are. Two, if we, if they approve any, either one of these fees tonight, what's going to happen next year? Are we going to be back here again doing the same thing again next year?
So the answer to your first question, uh, I believe you asked is how do we get here?
Yeah, how do we get here?
Um, a few, a little while before I took office, there were some discrepancies with budget line items. We had, one of our departments had been given increases that we did not have a future plan to be able to sustain those increases. And that was in the amount of, um, that was in the amount of $594,163.8.
That was a carryover from 2018?
Twenty, it started up sometime around, I want to say maybe April or May. Council approved that these increases be included, but at the time when they approved it, it was stated that it would have no budgetary impact. However, we didn't get any additional revenue in, and now we're dealing with this budget and we don't have the ability to sustain that, that, uh, income, that income increase.
Okay.
Also, there was a tranche that was taken out of the capital project sales tax budget line items to the tune of about $457,000 and placed in the general fund, for which was consumed by the general fund. So that is never supposed to happen. It is illegal. We cannot mix capital project funding with, um, with general fund, uh, funding source. So that, for this, we were trying to make an attempt to pay it back. So that was about $76,212 that we were trying to pay back, um, to pay down the amount in which we are supposed to be, um, that was already taken out of there. Also, there were several line items with salary discrepancies in it, which included our tax assessor's office and our auditor's office. So those are two areas that we ended up having to realize in that it was budgeted for one thing, but actual expense was coming out with more. So we had to reconcile that so that what was paid out was exactly, what we were paying out matched what we would be budgeting for. So we had to correct that. We also are undergoing a county reassessment, which is a state mandate, supposed to be done every five years, um, and that's the reassess your property taxes. Um, we also have this year introduced the auditor's boat motor software, which is also a state mandate that we must have that, um, in place so that she can properly calculate, um, these, these particular fees associated with owning these items. Also, there was an increase in a rate change in the South Carolina retirement system as well as police officers retirement systems. Health and workers compensation rate changes were conducted and then also taking into account that there is an average of 1.1% increase in our utilities.
Okay, I, I, I hear all that. Okay, I hear all that. Now, tell me, I know my time is up, but tell me what part of this is basic salary and what part of this $970,000 is operation?
Um, roughly without having a calculator in front of me, we're looking at approximately a little over $600,000 in salaries.
All right. When you came in office in January, you brought a lot of new people with you, am I correct? Were, were these salaries calculated into this budget?
In the 2018, 2018, 2019 budget?
2019.
Yes, they were in the budget. They had, they had, they had.
How was they in the budget? It wasn't here.
There were positions that were open, or agencies.
All of these positions, all of them open?
The only person that came over that was brand new was from our public works department. The rest of the people were already staffed, so all I did was transfer them over and give them a, add them into others, add additional funding for their responsibility in slots that were already there.
Additional funding?
Mm-hmm.
Well, where?
Slots that were already budgeted for.
So there was no new salary increase in 2018? The balance of 2018 budget, there was no new salary increase?
There were, there were no budgetary impacts to the salary. So if council approved the salary to be $10,000, we did not go over that $10,000.
Okay.
So create, created no budgetary impact.
So when council votes, when council votes tonight, let's say we go with option nine, you talk about hardware or the auditor's office, I believe you said, right?
All of these are in the major essential expenses that were not included in the approved 2019-2020 budget.
Say it again?
All of these expenses that I have just listed were major and essential items, expenses that were not included in the 2019-2020 budget. Because remember, when we first did the budget, we reverted back to the 2018-2019 numbers.
Because it is past the car tax, am I correct? That's because we didn't get the car tax back, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so what, what are you, I see a lot of options on here tonight, and it says either vehicle tax or real estate tax. So which is it going to be?
And it also gives various options. Option nine is the one that I just stated and I just introduced that stated that there will be no budgets, no impact to our citizens, meaning no fee, no vehicle fee, no parking fee, and no furlough.
That's the one we want. We'll take that one. Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else?
I have one more question. Uh, the county spent $600,000, I believe, on Hurricanes Florence and Matthew. I believe FEMA should be reversing for that. Has that happened?
That is what we are adding into this, and we just got confirmation this morning because as you are aware of, and maybe you're not aware of, sometimes the turnaround with FEMA can be over two years or more. So when I realized that we ran a crunch and I stated clearly on Facebook that I would be looking for other options, I made some phone calls and determined that we will get this money in within this fiscal budget that we can utilize to put back into our budget, which is why we're not.
How will it be utilized?
It will be put back in, applied to the deficit that we are experiencing. And as you can tell, as you can see on page four of your package, along with these other options, because it's not $600,000, you have to understand that they, we only get the 25, 75% match. So we would only get at this time $445,000, $445,771.43.
I know, I know I've been up and I hit you. You know, I know you do a lot of, I'm on Facebook. I don't do Facebook. I have seven, three years of, I don't do Facebook and I don't intend to start now. So you have to find some other way of kind of communicating. When you have no Facebook program, you come down and you can team up, say I have a notice that we can come and sit in here and listen to you do your thing on Facebook. That'd be great. Thank you.
That's great. And I also was out in the public. I probably would get about 10 or 12 sous chats.
Yeah, but I didn't get the notice.
I actually came out and did those chats.
I didn't get the notice for your meeting. I found out about a pastor.
They were in the paper?
Quite well taken.
I didn't know.
Hi, my name is Nolan McFat. And I'm agreeing with that gentleman that just left here. I think we should get option nine, don't charge the taxpayer. What about the people that is on a fixed income, that is barely paying their medicine, account for old year medicine, or the life deal is too high? Or other things that is going on? I mean, you should, or you guys should take that into consideration. When they get older, be that same buck too?
Let me also, I didn't get an opportunity to answer part B of Mr. Brown's, and I believe it was a portion of part B. For many, many years, ever since 2014, um, someone asked, how did we get here? We have never been here before since you got in there. So my response is that over, ever since 2014, Williamsburg County has received upwards of about $7 million in FEMA funds. So that's how Williamsburg County has been surviving and been able to get through with those rough times. It wasn't because of any, any other thing.
I just asked, I asked a question, you answered. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, what stopped the FEMA fund from coming in? Or is it still coming in?
At this time, we do have some outstanding FEMA debt that I will be reaching out to collect in, but it's a process because not everything that was presented is going to be eligible. So at this point, the only thing that I can guarantee is that we're going to get back enough to meet our budgetary deficit.
Excuse me, once again, I got to ask a question. Why can't we have the, um, trash pickup Monday through Saturday like it has been before? Whether it changes to Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays?
I can live with three days.
I can live with three days too.
I can live with three days too, but.
That's going to be too bad.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but then, um, you can get people to volunteer. Sometimes people may volunteer, but then, you know, they need not. But then, you know, everybody doesn't know this, like, we're all here tonight, but everybody's not here, just don't know about this, and you're going to put it in the paper stating that from this point on, when is this going to be, um, um, the common factor?
We have to, that's going to be completely up to council how they want to handle things.
Okay. And you told, a few minutes ago, you said, when you came here in the year 2014 or something like that, it was one thing, but then I remember when I was at the meeting a while back, they said the budget was one thing, but then you said you didn't hire anyone, you just fill in the position? But from what I understand, the day you got here, you moved people from one place to another, and, but then, apparently you've been looking and looking and looking ever since you got here, right?
Well, I came here in 2008 as the emergency director. Um, I've had the opportunity to work and I believe in, in, in hopefully promoting within first and then looking outside.
But when you got in, you just moved and moved and moved and brought back in certain things and certain stuff?
Based on my assessment and the way that I wanted my administration to run, yes, ma'am, I did.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Skipper, I have a question. Mr. Nolan, I think you already answered. The year that we went back.
He said that, Mr. Nolan.
Mr. Nolan. Richard Nolan.
He said Mr. Nolan.
I always say that. Oh, I knew you wanted to make it a few months. And the year we went back since we was in so much trouble with taxes. And you, you have a little figure? The year we went back, probably 2014 or 15, or 2014, we went back on that before you came, you had that?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You said the year we were back in the tax. Explain.
First, we went back when we was in debt. I said debt. What year, did you have a year on that?
Well, I don't really, all I know is we've always struggled with financial issues since I've been here.
Okay, here's what I asked, I knew you wanted to be here for six months, and I think they had something that going on with you. I want to know what year I was in before we could have come to the front.
Maybe some other members of council can answer that.
Can I ask the council one question? Mr. Nolan, how many years we was back, we was in trouble with, with being in debt before somebody got in?
That's a council thing. It kind of began that, yeah, yeah.
What I'm asking you now, uh, we just now understanding how much trouble we in, or before we didn't know how much trouble we was in. We were, we in trouble. We are in trouble. We, Brocanti, are in trouble. And I'm asking, how many years ago back? Because I think he was on county council, what, 30 years, 33 years?
Four.
Okay, 34. How many, I'm asking, how many years, how far back from supervisor place it went out, we was in debt? We just now find out that we was in debt in facilities, right? Like that. I mean, I mean, we didn't have the opportunity to.
That's what I'm trying to say.
That's why I want to find out.
And that's why I tell you, county have always been in debt ever since I was on county. And it needs paid off regardless of what we do here tonight. And next year, we can still be in debt.
Okay.
But it's the operational system that's the way it could be paid off.
Okay. Okay.
Nolan, I think too, based upon the auditor's report, I think the auditor stated something due to the fact that three years ago, we started to progression of going back, 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 something along the lines. So I guess three years ago, when we really started getting into trouble, based upon what her, her assessment was.
That's, that's pretty accurate.
Okay.
Okay. But one of the reasons that we don't have no economic growth here, we have factory here, we wouldn't be in debt. What true?
You have to adjust, you have to adjust yourself accordingly. I mean, come back to yourself, you've been roughly running the budget for your household. Certain things happen to your employment, you have to adjust accordingly. And when those things occur, you're supposed to do it. Years ago, we wasn't, been here not quite as long as I was, but it was quite a while ago. Also, the county had the revenue cut back from the state, the money that you were sending to the state. Well, county council didn't take any action on laying off people, cutting back, where other county did. We said, because we was so badly in need of people working, we said we would not lay off any of our employees. What do we do? We would put a freeze on high. When a person retired, don't replace their position back. If a person got fired, we wouldn't replace their position back unless it was definite of a position that needed to be placed back. That didn't take place in this county. Not the point ringers square, who, and who what? I think all both administrations contributed to it. You understand?
I like to.
To watch back truth because God like the truth. Both administrations contributed to that. Other ways of cutting back on revenue, we made a policy, and these other council around here, we do certain things. Y'all know it, Lord, you over here, we made policy, employ a property victim out there. I don't know whether to do it or not. But many ways to cut back and hold yourself down, but just like I said, that's not my job. I'm a county council. Once we pass a policy, we do certain things, our hands are tied.
I just asked a question.
Before you leave, let me say this, Nolan. One, I think Mr. Brown asked some pertinent questions. One of the, the major thing that we did, and I was part of it, and I apologize to everybody for not being more in tune and astute, uh, in making that decision, when we gave a substantial raise to a department, half a million dollars in raises. And a half a million dollars is going to affect anyone's budget. I don't care if you got 10 trillion dollars, a half a million dollars will certainly make a difference. And definitely allowed to happen, we give one department over a half a million dollar increase because we were told, we were misled, I was, that it would have no budgetary impact at all. And for real, yeah, that year, it did not, but it falls, it's falling on us now. And that's one of the biggest, I think, deficits, one reason why we feel this big deficit, because of that, other things too, but that's one of the major things that we had experienced. And I'm a part of it because I trusted and I trusted without being, doing what I should have done. I should have researched and should have checked to be sure myself, but I trusted that, well, it wouldn't have any impact on the budget, so I go with it. And I did, and so did some of the other council members. And that's what happened. That's one of the big things that happened with us, but it won't happen again, not for me.
Um, I'd like to have the opportunity to speak on behalf of what United States did. Basically, yes, he did say in 2017 that, um, a resolution was implemented to, for a hiring freeze, um, and that was because in order to balance the general fund budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018, a hiring freeze was required. And whereas it was because of the discovery of the FTC reclassification by the South Carolina Department of Revenue had anticipated their constraints is the reason that this was put in place. Now, in 2017, from 2017 to June, or to, um, to December 30th of 2018, there were 60 people hired. 60 people, 60 new hires were done prior to me taking over and after council's resolution 2017, 2009, implementing a hiring, hiring freeze. I brought in one new person on my administration and transferred the rest. So I am not the culprit in, in this. Do we have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Come on to the front, sir. That's the phone you next, I'm sorry.
A lot of what I had planned to talk about has already been covered. If we go with option nine, and hopefully the fee issue would be off the table. Option nine sounds okay right now, but I have, um...
I can't hear you.
I have some past issues. Um, we had some problems way back when with, they happened about the same way some of these events happened, each part of that happened. We had a landfill just hit us out of nowhere. It, it went to, to a second reading before anybody realized really what was going on. Everybody thought, well, it's just something like softers, we don't like it, but we, we don't have any choice. Turned out it was a lot more than that. And like I said, it went on with the second reading and it should have never, ever made it that far. It went to public hearing and was, it made it to third reading. Luckily, we had some council members who, they listened to the people and we, we put an end to that. However, that debacle cost us two quarters of a million dollars. $710,000 because, I don't want to point fingers, it's not my job here today. I don't, I don't, I expressed to, um, Dr. Wright on the phone recently that we may, some of you may see exchanges between us on social media and get the wrong idea. I have no, it's not personal between Dr. Wright and I, or any of you at all. I'll state the issues, I'll be passionate about it. It's no, it's, it's not personal. Uh, when I talk about what happened with the landfill, it's not personal with the house. The, uh, the fee issue in my head, I mean, I, I could be completely wrong. I, I looked for the answers all over the place. I called every state agency I could think of. It had to do with the proposed fee. It was, people were trying to call it a service fee. In order to have a service fee, you have to offer a service for the fee paid. You can't, the council can't just have two readings on something in a public hearing and get the third reading and decide they're going to charge a fee. You have to offer a service for that fee. Um, and a council can't legally raise taxes, can't create a new tax without approval from General Assembly. Um, like I said, luckily, I, I think the fee issue may be off the table, but the way that happened, it went to second reading, but there was no ordinance for anybody to vote on in order to have a second reading. I went, I... I went, I took the, the flyer as word, and said, we can inspect the documents associated with ordinance twenty nineteen dash ten. I went up to the councilman, excuse me, the supervisor's office, like it said on the flyer, and I asked politely if I could see that ordinance. There's nothing to be offered. Uh, everybody was very kind, very courteous, um, made their best attempt to show me a few things, a few facts, and, and I appreciate that. But like I said, there was no ordinance, there was nothing in writing for anyone to vote on. It could have been a serious mistake. In that, if you passed a fee and collected what you wanted to collect, say you collected a million dollars. Six months down the road, someone with the state says, you know, that wasn't legal what y'all did, y'all have to give the money back. Well, where are you then? You're, you're another billion dollars in the hole. Um, like I said, it's not personal, but I would like to ask each of the councilmen to do a little bit of homework. Don't take anybody's word for it, don't take my word for it, I don't know, I just asked questions, I couldn't find the answers for them. All the state, they, they were courteous to me, they tried their best to answer my question, can, can the council just impose a fee with three readings and a public hearing? They said, we don't know, every one of them. I called the Association of Canadians, as Dr. Wright suggested I do. They didn't know it. Association of Canadians is not government, it's a, it's an organization. They do seminars to instruct people like county council members and things like that. They had no authority, um, didn't know, and anyone knew that. But they, they charged to conduct seminars, and I guess they have a, a good, I guess they provide a good service. I don't know anything about it, I don't know people that have been there. But, the people with, like, the State Attorney General's office, I talked to a member in their office this morning. They, they couldn't often be a legal opinion, because that's a bug, they, they legally can't do it. But I explained to them what happened with the proposed fee, and they, they kinda told me, I don't know, it smells pretty bad. Uh, she read the, the information on the flyer about the ordinance, and she read what you proposed to do with the money. I don't know, but it smells bad. Um, I'd just like to ask each mem, each member to, to be a little bit more accountable to the people. Uh, and also, we need some way of auditing the funds that we collect. We collected, as was mentioned earlier, collected already a lot of money from the, uh, the penny tax to do with EMS and that, that type of thing. Wasn't six months, that account was already compromised. In this same room, I was, I, I was assured that that account would be audited and watched. And not one penny would be spent on anything until they had a project in mind, had put in the necessary cash money to fund that project. That didn't work. Next thing you know, they buy a fund to do something, buy some vehicles, whatever. Next thing you know, there's a large amount of money gone from that account. We can't let that happen. It, it, it just, it's, I'm, I, it's happened in the past, it's happened all my lifetime here in Williamsburg County. I can't blame one person, there are a lot of people at home. Um, we just, we, we, we have, if we have to hire one person, I hate to hire anybody, we don't have the money to do it. But if we can get one person to, that's their job every day, to check every account, I take the group with all these accounts. But we, we have to keep, just like everyone at home, we have to watch where every penny goes to make our book, to pay our bills at the end of the month. County council is no different. We get, luckily, maybe we can get some theme of funds and get out of this mess, but, you know, if we keep on like we are, we'll always be in a mess, we'll never, we'll never amount to anything. I don't wanna see Mount Pleasant turn into, pardon me, I gotta buy, I don't, I don't wanna see Williamsburg County turn into Mount Pleasant. You know what a mess that is. But I, I would like to see people happy and prosperous, but we'll never be able to do it with this debt. It, no accountability, the school system is a mess, that's not y'all's fault. We can't attract any industry because the school system's a mess, county council a mess, we don't have no money, no, we, we don't have none. And it's because we don't watch our money. There's no other reason, we, people put pay off plenty of money, we have revenue to be a lot better than we are if we just watch. That's all we gotta do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Dr. Wright, I, I concur with, uh, this, um, option nine. I think you laid it out pretty good, because I came to see how much tax you was gonna raise, how, what's, what was gonna be on us. But the way you laid it out, said we want to pay nothing, we got to worry about no fee, I think that's good. Councilors, go ahead and do what they got to do, and let's go home. You already said it to him, you supervisor.
Anyone else?
My name is Leroy McCaughan, and I'm here about a year and nine to tax citizen in Williamsburg County. Ninety percent of the citizens here tonight is retired, and for us to have another tax raise, it could cause some of the retired citizens to lose what they got. And we're, we're just not able on fixed income to keep dealing with taxes in principle. And I'm glad that you say that, you know, is, is that possible, that it don't be raised? That's my reason of being here, because the young people had already run out of Williamsburg County for some reason or another, and we just ain't able to keep going with tax. Uh, we know that we want our county to move on, but I learned in the, uh, in the last six, uh, first of the year, it wasn't a loss in the budget, it was that we weren't doing the renting, that county was doing a lot of rent. And because of these new buildings we put up, they were being taken for out of the budget that were there. But I even thought that there was a lot of money lost, uh, throughout county. Once upon a time, I even worked for the county, and I know where we come from, and Mr. Addy knows well where we come from, and I thought we made a great improvement in Williamsburg County for the last forty years, uh, and what we had to work with. And I, I'm here, I would appreciate it, and we don't have to lose our land for tax. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Madam Supervisor and County Counsel, my name is Wantia Green. I have stand before you before, and I'm listening to a lot of our citizens talk about this tax and our county council, and I'm gonna be three, my three is not gonna be six. I said it once, and I said it again, I came from Baltimore, Maryland. And when I moved here, I went to campaign, and I always noticed that the ones running the campaign sold dinners. And it was due because nobody wanted to pay the hundred and fifty dollars a plate to support the campaign members. Now, since I moved to South Carolina, you are giveaway food. And the people go to these rallies, and they eat, and they see their friends, and because we got something in common, because we're at this rally, we think this is the person we need to vote for. Now, we eat and we vote, and the taxpayers do not hold nobody accountable. This is the first place I have lived and seen board members sit thirty and forty and fifty years. The county people and residents should be held accountable just like our board members, because we have gotten complacent. I heard somebody say, I don't have Facebook, okay, you got a newspaper, King Street News has been here since I moved here. If you can't read, get your grandchildren or somebody to read it to you, there's no excuse. There are no excuses to sit here and keep holding everybody else accountable except ourselves. We vote these people in, and we don't knock on the door and ask them what they doing for us. We see them in the grocery store, we wanna know when they have their next meal, or who coming to their house. We don't ask any questions, and then when things like this happen, we wanna say, you, 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 and you, and you. But we are the blame, we vote, and we don't see no no more till the next two or three or four years. We get complacent, or we got people sitting on the board for all these years, and we say yay, 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 yay. And then somebody come here tonight and say, this is the first time, I don't come to every meeting, but I can say, I've never seen a board divided until now. I haven't, everybody on the same train. Now that the money has took a walk, everybody wanna point some fingers. But as citizens, look at yourselves. Just the only time we come together was time to eat and time to fuss. Hold yourselves accountable. We wouldn't be here if we hold those ones that we vote in accountable. Ask them what happened. If somebody come in here in two days and still six hundred thousand dollars, then we all need to find a secret. We all need to find a secret, how you do it in two days? Cause I'm still struggling trying to figure out how I can get six hundred from the family. We need to stop pointing fingers and come together now. This is a mining lesson, stop voting because you see your friends at these places when you eat. Stop going on with your friends thing. Get to know the person that's running for these offices, and stop going on Facebook saying who your friends support. My friends support a lot of people that I don't agree with. But when I go in that ballot, it's my choice. It's my choice. Some may vote for Mr. Woods, and some may vote for these people, but it's my choice. I don't vote because it's in popularity. I vote who would do for me, my children, and my children's children, and then tell you, I'm gonna stop them and ask them what I wanna know. Ignorance is not an excuse in the court of law. Stop saying you don't know, there's too many ways you can know. You got social media, you got, I, my grandma used to call it kitchen talk. Somebody, somewhere, I've been to a meeting, you can ask a question. But this is the most I have seen our county turn out when it's time to point fingers. You here tonight, stay in tune. Then wait, once we get out this hole, we gonna get into another one like this, it'll be a different hole, and we can get out a little better. I don't have, I wanna fix income as well. However, if forty dollars gonna dig me out of a ditch, I'm gonna pay that forty dollars. I'm sorry, everybody wanna go with option nine, we all gonna fix com, in, income. Well, you get paid every two weeks, or if you get paid once a month, it's fixed, it come up on the cycle. It's fixed, it's gonna come up on a rotation, anything on a rotation is fixed. I have no problem paying the forty dollars, because the hand of one is the hand of all, and as citizens of Williamsburg County, we are all to blame. And I'm gonna go home with my liver.
Anyone else, please try to keep, um, our comments down to one to three minutes, please.
Jamie Donald, and it, and I know that sounds like we've already got the, the problem solved, but as the lady was just saying just then, you know, us as citizens, um, we all want a free ride, but we want the best fried chicken in the house, you know, and, and to me, I mean, you know, we, the, the landfill issue, not all of us disagree with it, you know, and it was, it was a lot of revenue that was gonna be generated for this county. The people spoke, and it was stopped, that's, that's well and good, that's what they wanted. We got a rock quarry right now, this, y'all are entertaining that idea, whatever, and, 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 you know, to me, we can't, we can't kick everything out the bus because it doesn't suit me, or it doesn't suit you. You know, if, if, there's a thing called the will of progress, you know, if we're gonna move forward in this county, instead of sitting here worrying about being broke every year, you know, we need to start, you know, helping these people that are, that are coming here and trying to do something in our area that's gonna better us. And we may not like it because it's beside us, or we may not like it because, you know, they didn't give me a job, or whatever, but it's the better of everybody, it's not the better of me, it's not the better of you, it's what we need to do as, as a county, as a people, yeah, the people speak. But we can't keep everything for hunting, we can't keep everything for fishing, you know, I mean, somewhere, sometime, we have to, I'm gonna bite the bullet and let progress move forward, or otherwise, we're all gonna be on fixed incomes, and we're all gonna be getting jobs in Florence, or Charleston, somewhere like that, having to commute and just having a living quarters here. You know, and, and I, I appreciate what all y'all do, and I appreciate everybody's opinion here tonight, and I think that, that, uh, a lot's been said and a lot needed to be said. Um, but I feel like, you know, it, it, we need to move forward, you know, with, with, with the jobs and stuff like that, and all, we don't need to, you know, every, 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 every little industry in the country, you know, can't fit inside that little box that we wanna fit in, it's gonna be nice and neat, not polluted, and anything like that, you know, I mean, they, they have regulations, they don't have to go on it. You know, and, and if they adhere, if they adhere to all of those things, you know, why do we, why do we give them such a hard time to be here? I mean, you know.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going one? Going twice. We are ending the public hearing, and we are moving into our regularly scheduled, uh, our special call council meeting. We have our invocation today. Our invocation today will be by none other than Reverend Arthur Ford, he's the pastor of Greater St. Mark's. Oh, personally, calling me in order. Now we can have the invocation.
Thank you, Doctor. Bow heads lift your hearts. Father, in the wonderful and precious name of Jesus Christ, we, your children, have gathered tonight, Lord, in your presence, thanking you for another day's journey, thank you for your grace, for your mercy. Father, we come as bad children before good parents, understanding and realizing we can't do anything apart from you. Master, we invite you to adorn this meeting with your Holy Spirit, that you would guide our hearts and our minds to do things that are right and pleasing in your sight. Bless these members of council now, as they make decisions for your people. Give them to know, Lord, that your hand of God is upon you. Bless the members and citizens of Williamsburg County, hold us in the hollow of your hand, use us for your glory. And Lord, we thank you in advance for what you're doing and what you will do for Williamsburg County, in the name of Jesus, we pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our next order of businesses is the third reading, an adoption of ordinance number two zero one nine dash one zero, an ordinance amending Williamsburg County Budget Ordinance number two zero one nine dash zero five by providing a new section nine dash one as follows, pursuant to the authority granted to county council for Williamsburg County under the constitutional, constitution statutes and laws of the state of South Carolina. The county council is assessing a one-time temporary emergency fee here, and, and we'll put, whatever the decision will be, um, further to provide for the reduction or moving of certain other line items in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget to meet the current budget needs. Do we have any motion?
Okay, I'm a matter of, by the supervisor, I'm a little concerned about the wording, you still, the wording still says a one-time temporary fee.
Oh, we would.
We would correct that, I, I don't have the power to do a third read.
Whatever, I don't, I couldn't put anything in it, because I didn't know what the decision of council is gonna be, but we can, we can add in there zero, but we can also stick to the part, which is further to provide reduction or moving of certain other line items into the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. But we will have to redo the ordinance and have it prepared for you all.
Right.
So.
Right.
Yes, we will have to redo it.
Okay, so we, so we do that, um, would it be better for us just to, uh, make a motion for table until we get that done?
No.
With corrections. I'm moving for third reading, Madam Supervisor. Let me do the corrections.
Okay, with the corrections, I still don't know what the option now is chosen. So is there motion, do you have a second?
Madam Supervisor, I would, I would make the motion, um, me personally, to table it to next meeting, to the next regularly scheduled meeting, several reasons. Number one, we as a body have just seen all these options tonight, I would like the opportunity to visit my constituency and see what their preference is. I don't vote for myself, I vote for them, so I can't, I can't, can't talk to them about what our options are until I receive them. We've been here for basically fifty minutes, um, if I were handed a file in my business and said I had to make a decision in fifty minutes on a million dollar case, I'd be committing my practice. A number of the citizens have expressed their concern about, you know, that they thought we needed to do our homework, um, one, one constituent said that ignorance of the law is no excuses, so I don't think that, uh, from now to the next meeting's gonna really make a big difference. So I would motion that we table this, this third reading to our next regularly scheduled council meeting.
If I'm not mistaken, Counsel, there was already a motion. And the other part of that-
What was that motion, I'm sorry?
I asked him, I said, "Do we have a motion for third reading?" He said, "I have a motion for third reading," and he said, "I'd like a different motion." So why don't we-
There was, there was no second, I didn't hear a second on that motion, and quite frankly, I didn't understand if there was, I don't know what the motion was for, to read what?
Motion for third reading.
Of what?
Third reading of the, of the ordinance with the amendment.
But to adopt one through ten, which one?
And I asked which one, I said, "Council has not decided which one." And my thing is that y'all have been given, with the exception of the option, um, this, in, you were given this a month ago, the options, the only thing that was added was the fact of saying that the citizens, nor employees, will be burdened with this. It was, it was no, it's, it's pretty much a, no, I, I, I mean, either y'all gonna go back and say you're gonna tax the citizens, or you're gonna go back and throw the employees, I've given the best option, which was nine, and that had no impact on anyone. So I'm still trying to figure out why we're still waiting to have this done, considering the options were given to you all in September for review, the first, um, the first couple, uh, the first, uh, eight options, and then we added another one on for the last, um, meeting we had. I'm just trying to figure out how long we gonna keep taking this?
Can you explain that rule, yeah, I mean, we've been dealing with this for so long, um, when, when is it gonna come to fruition? Let me ask you, please. On this, it doesn't have to do with the tax notice.
But we don't know what your option is, especially if your option-
Option nine is the one you got now. I really feel that option nine is the one that I'm gonna go along with, but I don't see, and I, as I was figuring my mind, like, sales, we don't have to put a tax notice on our next council meeting. I feel as though that, I feel more comfortable with that. And the next thing is, because once we, yes, we are counting, we've heard a lot tonight, a lot of important training, once, whatever we do and whenever this budget is passed, we'll have nothing else to say about this budget, how it be passed. And I don't think you applying, me changing on option nine, unless it's something that I feel as though that I need to be doing. But tonight, that, that, and that, we, I'll see what the rest is.
Uh, Madam Supervisor, back it.
Mary Michael?
Yes, thank you. Uh, first of all, is the third reading, it wants to have third reading tonight, is that anything wrong with the legal portion of it?
According to Mr. Billy, we will have to do an entire new full, full ordinance, but this was based on options, and it would be zero dollars if that were a choice of counsel, and then the movement of these other, of inserting option nine. So there is nothing wrong with what we would be voting on, because he already took into consideration all of the options, with the exception of the one I've just introduced today.
Okay, what, what's that being said? And, uh, we have, or at least I have, and had this information for months at a time, and, uh, the original thing when it came up, we did not want to impose anything on the citizen. And I just, I, I don't know what it is that for me, option nine is the best that I have seen thus far, and I don't know why we can't go in and take a vote on that tonight.
Madam Supervisor, and Councilor Miller, I agree with you that it does appear option nine is the best option, is certainly the best option that I see, no question about it, and I don't see us not doing, uh, not passing option nine, but at the first, um, reading, we had six options, and second reading, if y'all wasn't here, I understand, we got seven A, seven B, and eight, and now we've got option nine. All I'm saying is, I don't see the urgency to wait two weeks to vote on it, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that option nine not gonna be the best option. I would just like the opportunity to review all the options in full, to not make a rash decision within forty-five minutes of receiving all the options, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, with the pleasure of Counsel.
I don't know, I, I had a motion for, like, a second, so.
It died. For the record, the motion for it died for like a, a second, do we have another motion?
Madam Supervisor, let me, which might be, about second?
A second motion, all right, thank you.
I make a motion that we take this, uh, approve this on our first reading of November.
Second.
Okay, Officer, now you say-
Do we have any discussion?
Yes, discussion. Y'all saying approve it in November. If you know you're gonna approve it, then why not approve it now? You didn't say study it to see, so you gonna approve it in November?
Well, if the option has been changed, we just wanna make sure that y'all decide something different other than option nine, that we do have an opportunity. Any other discussion? Yeah, I said any discussion. All those in favor for, um, table this for third reading and to the next council meeting scheduled for the first Monday in November, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposers, the same. The aye have it, in so order. Moving to the next order of business, which is second reading of ordinance number two zero one nine dash eleven, and ordinance providing for the transfer of authority for conducting municipal elections in the town of Suckey to Williamsburg County Board of Registration and Election Commissions. Where is the pleasure of Counsel?
What, second reading, Madam Supervisor?
Motion and properly second, all those in favor for second reading of ordinance number two zero one nine dash eleven, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. Next order of business is second reading of ordinance number two zero one nine dash one two, and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more incentive agreements by and among Williamsburg County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county as Project Flag, as sponsors and one of more existing or deformed or acquired subsidiaries or affiliated or related entities and one or more sponsor affiliates to drive or be in league, uh, they add valorum, gloria, and tax incentive to provide for special source revenue credits and other related matters. Pleasure of Counsel.
Motion, second reading.
All those in favor of second reading of ordinance number two zero one nine dash one two, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. We need a motion for German.
If we'll be a German matter, um, Supervisor, I would like to make a comment. I noticed that tonight, as we had people come over and speak, that was very good, but I do, or I did sense some resentment, uh, of this administration, but I would like to say to everybody here tonight, this mess that we are into is not because of this administration, but previous administration. Now, I would like to encourage and act everyone here to let's give this administration our equal and fair chance and see what this administration will do. And if this admini- administration gets in a ball of, you know, a ball of confusion, then it'll be on this administration, but I don't, do want you to be fair, and let's give them the benefit of, give us the benefit of the gall, and give us a chance before you condemn. Only agree.
Mr. Wood? Appreciate the information of the condition, that, the bad condition that you're talking about, the county, uh, could you give that to us on paper?
No.
Because that's something, I don't know nothing about.
No, I, I just made a statement, I don't, I'm not-
Okay, okay, we didn't talk of him that, I mean, you know, we want the county to move on, and we want, we want y'all to, to be the best that been here. We want y'all to be the best that been here, but then we, I don't want you to accuse the one that been here with Mr. Mc- 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 not been here for forty years, I don't want you to accuse them that they were bad management for Williamsburg County, that's all I'm saying.
I think I understand what you're saying.
I make a motion for German.
All those in favor of German, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same.